Yeah Jeff did a really nice job.
Hello.
Hey.
Hey Brendan. How's it going?
Good, yourself?
Good.
Evening Brendan.
Hello.
It's not loading up Kate, you need a control.
Can everybody please mute as much as anybody who's close to.
Mute?
Yes, alright Mayor you can start the meeting, thank you.
Okay, we'll call this town council meeting to order of our December 15th meeting and we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance if we could. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
The flag.
Of the United States of America.
Of America.
To the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. Indivisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you, thank you everyone. A little awkward on this but we got.
I'm still. Mayor Kusinski. That's where the money. How you doing? That's her Ross up.
Here.
Here, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna go through and mute people who are muted right now. So if you need to speak.
Wait, what was that volume again?
Yeah, somebody's making a lot of noise.
The volume?
Okay Mayor, I think you're fine.
Okay, so now we are have our audience of citizens, so if anyone wishes to speak, now would be the time.
I would love to. You guys hear me?
Yeah, we'll go ahead, Kristen will go ahead with you first and then we'll take you Paul second.
Okay, alright, sorry about that. Um, hey guys, Kristen Campanelli, 30 Sawmill Drive, Berlin, Connecticut. Um, I just wanted to thank you all for taking out an order finance appointment tonight. Uh, Mayor Mark Iberian here, working in, you know, team with us. Um, that's been awesome. Um, and we're really excited about the candidate who's come before you guys tonight and, you know, looking forward to your nomination. Alright, thanks guys.
Kristen. Appreciate it. Uh, Paul. Paul, you're next, you're up.
Might have to unmute.
I'm gonna unmute everybody in case he was muted, just everybody be quiet. Paul, can you come in?
Paul? Says he's speaking but I can't hear, right?
Mr. Mayor, I know that David Frankalangia was on the line, I think he and Paul were gonna speak about the same thing.
Okay.
I, can you guys hear me, this is Dave Frankalangia.
Yeah, Dave, I worry, yeah, Paul, I thought Paul was speaking but if you're speaking about the same thing, we could start with you.
Sure, Dave Frankalangia, 232 Butternut Lane. Um, I'm also the athletic director at the high school and I just wanted to touch base with you guys regarding the conversations around the dog park potentially at Pistol Creek. You know, both of our cross-country teams at the middle school and both of our cross-country teams at the high school both race there. Predominantly on the right-hand side of the course and, you know, I just, I just wanted everybody to be aware of the surroundings, the race. I, I sent a couple of pictures of the map courses to Michael and I, I think he's gonna be forwarding them to you if you haven't received them already. The kids love running there, um, it's, it's a great venue, it's a great, it's a great place. And again, I just wanted you guys to be just kinda mindful of the course that we run and, and where we, and where we run at Pistol Creek. The, we used to run at Sage Park but the traffic coming in and out of Sage Park was pretty dangerous and I guess that's one of the main reasons why they moved to Pistol Creek in the first place. But I'd love to answer any questions if you guys have any in particular, but for the most part, I just wanna make you guys, you know, definitely aware that, you know, four, four teams from the Berlin Public School System uses that.
So Dave, question for you, um, so yeah, we haven't, certainly haven't made a decision yet, it's just the possible alternate place rather than bicentennial for reasons with the Conservation Commission and different issues we have there. So the, the one, we, we identified, I think it's hole number one, right, Eroshe if I'm correct and, and so it's by the, right by the handicap parking lot, it's that first fairway there. And there is the path, so there's a path that goes through that fairway and then of course there's the path that can surround it. Is that, does that help to alleviate some of your concerns if that's the one we do pick, that's why we kinda picked it because there's the path that you can walk around, right, obviously and then, or if you walk through, it'd be posted that there's dogs off the leash in that particular area?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where that handicap area is, the kids come running down there and they make, they make a few loops actually, both of the kids. Um, I will say this, being a, being a town resident as well, um, I, I see a ton of people, um, you know, cross-country skiing, I can see, I mean, you guys probably have heard of this too as well, but, um, just, it, it does get used a, a ton throughout the course of the year.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know, it's, it's difficult, you know, the dog park issue has been difficult, we've got through everything with our animal control policy and this is the last piece and trying to, trying to compromise, uh, the best we can with everyone and certainly glad for your input, maybe, you know, before we, I mean, with COVID, everything's been delayed, maybe as we get through the winter months, uh, we'll all go out there and look at it and, and, you know, if, if that, you know, that, if that becomes the place and, and, like I said, there's some more restrictions believing in a bicentennial because it's not really town property, I mean, it is town property but it's the Conservation Commission, uh, you know, that kinda runs it and neighborhood issues there, different things and obviously the, uh, Pistol Creek's got the big parking lot, which is part of the problem over at Bicentennial, so, you know, running into issues there for years and just trying to look for a potential compromise, but again, you know, we'll have some more ordinance committee, it's still an ordinance committee Dave, so, you know, maybe when we have a next ordinance committee sometime after the first of the year, we can talk a little bit more about it and, uh, you know, look at the room and see what we all think.
Yeah, I'd love to, you know, even just go out, if we needed to go out there and whatnot and kinda just, you know, whatever you guys need from me, uh, I'll be happy to, uh, to share with you for sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I think we should do that, we'll, one day, you know, we'll see how January, February goes, if it's not, weather's not too crazy, maybe we'll go out there one day just to see, you know, how it, how it works with, with, uh, with the, uh, the run, you know, the cross-country team and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll take it from there, you know, like I say, it's still just a discussion and, uh, we're definitely open to all, all input from anybody in the town that wants to, uh, you know, talk about it.
Alright, beautiful, I appreciate your time, I know you guys have a lot on the agenda, so I'll let you guys go.
Thanks.
Thanks Dave.
Thank you everybody.
Uh, anyone else for the audience of citizens?
Um, excuse me Mayor, this is Counselor Penessa.
Yes.
I'm unable to make this fabulous device that the town provided for to work. Um, I'm on, I'm on a telephone, uh, if I could find a can where to string, it might work better than either one of these things, but, uh, I just wanted to let you know that I am in attendance by telephone.
We, uh, we hear ya, so I'm glad you, you made it by telephone. If not, we're gonna send a Pony Express out Charlie looking for you, I don't know what to do, but you're here, you made it, so.
I'll be glad to chip in for a mimeograph machine if it would help the town communicate.
We got it, alright, so anyone else in the audience of citizens, we're good? Okay, well, we'll move on to our meeting agenda, we have our consent agenda, we have, uh, two items, alright, on our consent agenda, donations to the Berlin Animal Control, uh, $300 and, um, and monetary donations for the library, so those are only two issues, uh, two items, so we'll go ahead, if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a, take a motion.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, uh, we'll make a motion to accept the two consent agenda items tonight.
Thank you, a second on that.
A second, you have to unmute a second.
I'll second. We have a second, okay. Alright, thank you all as in favor, aye.
Aye.
Alright, uh, any opposed? Alright, so moved, on to new business.
Yeah, good, good evening everyone, the first item on new business is an update from the Central Connecticut Health District. So before I move on again, not to beat a dead horse, if you're not muted, please mute it because to prevent feedback and, uh, dog walks and, um, if you have to speak, just mute, unmute and mute back when you're done, thank you, I appreciate that. So we invited, uh, Charles Brown from the Central Connecticut Health District to give us an update on the current surge in Connecticut and especially how it's affecting Berlin, but most importantly, um, good news, let's look at the, the positive, the light at the end of the tunnel, the vaccine is rolling out and the state has airplane and it'll be, uh, good for us to hear from Charles and how that will, um, be handled by the Central Connecticut Health District and, uh, perhaps Berlin as well. So Charles, over to you, you got about 10 minutes, we got a lot of items on the agenda, thank you.
Okay, so I'll talk fast, so where we stand right now with respect to the surge, uh, is Berlin currently as of yesterday, uh, with the newest numbers that we have out, has had 660 cases of COVID-19 at this point and unfortunately, uh, 21 deaths total related to COVID. As Eroshe had, had said, um, we are entering into a new phase of, um, of the pandemic and that phase is the offensive, so we've finally gotten to, uh, approved vaccines as of today, but the Pfizer-BioNTech, um, vaccine that started to be actually used, uh, yesterday in acute care facilities and then today, the FDA approved the Moderna vaccine. Of the two, they're both important and they both have a role to play in how vaccinations are gonna begin to roll out, uh, both within our healthcare facilities and also within, uh, our communities. So the Pfizer vaccine, as many of you may know, uh, has a lot of requirements for cold chain, for keeping it at, at ultra-cold temperatures, uh, and primarily the strategy that they're employing is to utilize, uh, acute care facilities that are used to, um, handling this type of vaccine. That's why you're seeing this deployed mainly to hospitals at the beginning of this and then they will also, uh, deploy to, uh, long-term care facilities, uh, both for the healthcare workers that are there and also, uh, for the residents that are within, uh, those facilities. Uh, as many of you may remember, uh, back in the spring, uh, we saw a large number across the state and within our health district of fatalities that really occurred, uh, from residents, elderly residents within long-term care facilities. So it is a major priority, uh, to be able to provide what, uh, protection that we can to that particular vulnerable population. Um, the Moderna vaccine that was, uh, approved today is a little bit more, uh, cold-stable, it can actually, uh, stay in a, a regular refrigerator or a vaccine refrigerator at 36 to 48 degrees, uh, for up to 30 days. And the plan, uh, really is to use that vaccine, uh, and our folks at the local health departments as well, uh, to be able to start to vaccini, vaccinate, uh, our first responders and our critical infrastructure, uh, hopefully starting here, uh, looking about maybe January timeframe, uh, to be able to start those vaccinations. Um, our preparedness coordinator and our community health staff, um, is currently going through the training for the Vaccine Administration Management System, uh, that's gonna be a lot utilized, uh, to be able to schedule these vaccines. Uh, both vaccines, um, require two doses of vaccination a few weeks apart, uh, so it's gonna be a little bit more complicated than our flu vaccines that we normally do each year, uh, but that Vaccine Administration Management System is supposed to help us manage that particular process. So our folks are actually spending a lot of time, uh, learning that, uh, acquiring what equipment that we need to be able to manage that effectively as we bring in, uh, folks to be vaccinated. You know, I will say this, um, we have seen a lot of cases, uh, here recently, we've seen an upsurge in cases, uh, for example, uh, in the last eight days in Berlin, uh, we've had 99 cases of COVID-19 confirmed cases. And that's definitely an increase, uh, from what we've seen here, uh, over the summertime and definitely what we see as a result of social gatherings and, 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 uh, things over the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, we're very concerned about coming up here with the Christmas holiday and we'd like to just encourage everybody to remember the prevention methods that we have in place. Use those three W's, wash your hands, wear a mask and watch your distance, um, so that we can, um, get to the point to where we're ready for vaccinations, uh, coming up here, hopefully beginning in January and then maybe as we roll out, uh, to the general population later into the spring, early summertime. But definitely keep your holiday, um, gatherings as small and tight as possible, we don't wanna give this virus any more opportunity to spread than what we need to, uh, because our hospitals at this, are rather full, um, in the region, the capital region right now, um, our ICU beds hover at around 80 to 85% full on a given day. Um, so far, we have not seen a lot of flu, um, we have not seen a flu case and I'm gonna knock on wood, um, here within, uh, this season, um, and I think that that's a lot to do with the precautions that we take for COVID are very good, uh, for keeping flu down as well. But if we were to have flu, uh, on top of COVID pushing those ICU beds, uh, to the brink, um, it would have a very dire effect upon those people who really need those critical assets, so I can't implore everyone to please, please make sure that you're doing, taking every precaution that you can, uh, to keep this from spreading. With that, I'll turn over to answer any questions that I can, uh, and to address any additional issues that you may wanna know.
Um, thank you Charlie, uh, we appreciate the information, um, and sad to see the cases up and certainly sad to hear about the 21, uh, people that have passed on, that's awful. Just out of the, the 660, right, is our total now?
660 as of yesterday.
Now, what is that, in that total, what does that mean, so positive, do we know about hospitalizations or is it just, uh, is just a positive test number?
It's the, the total positive test numbers that we've seen since the beginning of the pandemic.
Oh, okay, so that, that's a total from, from what?
March.
From March.
So from March to now?
Yes.
Okay, alright, uh, so, and the new cases, what were the, the new ones, like I say, recently going back a month or two, what do we have?
Well, I mean, going, going back here within the last, um, three weeks, we've seen a significant increase in cases, uh, I'll give you a for instance here, uh, so let me go back, um, to the middle of November. On November 15th, we had 365 cases in Berlin, um, and today, a month later, we have 660 cases. So from March until the middle of November, we were 350 something cases and we more than, almost doubled that amount, uh, within the last four weeks.
Yes, that is disturbing, that's disturbing to hear, and what, what do we think we attribute it to, do we think it is the holiday gathering maybe, is it the Thanksgiving effect we've heard about?
Yeah, it's, it's a majority of that, um, Mr. Mayor, um, with people that, you know, as we've gone on through the pandemic, uh, people have become, uh, a little bit more lax with their prevention methods, um, that's been one piece of it. Um, and then we've also seen, uh, a change in the, in the demographics of those people who are actually, uh, getting sick, uh, we see a much younger cohort, um, that are getting sick after the summertime and they tend to be a little bit more socially active, um, so they spread much wider. So with that, uh, raise in number of cases, we haven't seen the number of fatalities luckily, um, that we saw in, in, in the springtime, but they do tend to spread it a lot wider. Um, so that's why we see, I think we see a, a number of, of cases much more, uh, than what we saw back in the spring. In addition, I think, um, the lack of those universal across-the-board, um, precautions that we took with shutting everything down, um, we have not done that at this point, we've really relied upon, uh, you know, smaller measures at the government level to be able to slow the spread of this. But with that, just remember, this virus is very opportunistic, so if it gives an opportunity to spread, it really does take that opportunity and every interaction that we have at this point gives that another opportunity to spread. So our vigilance in assuring that we're washing our hands, uh, you know, wearing a mask and, and watching our distance, our social distance from folks really can't be overemphasized as we move forward.
The 21, uh, people that have passed on, so you, you mentioned that, was that earlier, so what, what percentage through the time from March to now?
So let me take a look at that real quick, so, um, I'll take the same, uh, timeframe that we looked at, uh, within the last month, so from 11:15, um, you know, we were at 17 deaths and then, you know, today we're at 21. So if we go back, you know, quite, quite a ways, we really stayed very, very, a long time at 17, uh, deaths, that was, you know, back from, let's see here, uh, back into the summertime, so, so up into the point of really mid, um, mid-November, uh, we had stayed stable at 17 deaths from back in July and since July, we've gained those four additional fatalities unfortunately. Um, as I said, as I said, um, I think that we've gotten much better, um, as our healthcare facilities have been able to, you know, deal with this vaccine, we get better at treating it, um, what we just need to do is to make sure that they're able to continue to treat patients and not overwhelmed.
Yeah, no, we all, we all, we all hope for that to happen and we hope, uh, everyone, uh, appreciate the report and I'll, my colleagues will have questions and just thank you for that and let's do the best we can in Berlin, we've gotten this far and let's hope we can get, uh, you know, further with, uh, with, you know, no more fatalities and no more deaths, of course, that's horrible, one, one is one too many as we know. And, uh, just urge everyone to continue with, with, uh, being cautious and like you said Charlie, wash your hands, wear the mask and hopefully as the vaccine rolls out, we'll, uh, we'll do much better, so anyone else, uh, for, for Charlie, questions?
Charlie, I, I have a quick question, uh, Counselor Beechir, how does this compare to the other communities that we're surrounded by? Are you seeing these type of numbers because I know that you're the central district as well in Southington or are you seeing this over in Rocky Hill, Newington?
We're, we're seeing, we're definitely seeing increases across the board, there's only about six, um, six towns in the state of Connecticut that are not in the red alert level at this point, uh, for the four towns that are in our district, uh, it's very similar, they average between, uh, 36 and about 48 cases per 100,000 within our four towns. Um, unfortunately, Newington's been pretty hard-hit, um, you know, and they have a lot of, uh, nursing homes, Rocky Hill had a similar situation early on, so their numbers are, are kinda high, especially with the deaths. But we have seen across the board, um, you know, no town is being spared from this.
Alright, thank you.
Hello, Charlie, uh, this is Counselor Luddy, uh, wouldn't it be true that with the increased number of tests, we've also been to see an increase in positive cases? Um, I've been reading a lot about the tests, um, with the cycle threshold being at 40, uh, even Dr. Fauci said a couple of months ago that anything that comes back with a cycle fit, uh, threshold of 35 or higher is always considered a false positive. And, you know, that those tests are, are not where they should be and that the cycle threshold should be in the 28 to 30 range. And, and to me, that seems like common sense to try and find out who is really contagious, not somebody that's had the disease, recovered, didn't even know they had it, you know, I would love to see us scale back the panic of this pandemic so that people can get back to their normal lives. Because I'm not sure if the vaccine is gonna get us there that quickly, so I was wondering about your thoughts about that.
Well, I mean, I agree with you, I think that testing from the very beginning of this has been problematic, um, I think that we have seen definite strides towards better tests, uh, to be able to support decision-making and to be able to identify those people who are potentially infectious so that we can actually do the appropriate contact tracing and get those folks in isolation. Um, so, you know, I mean, I think that as we have gone through this, we've gotten much better with it, um, there's still room for improvement and I think that every day, uh, as of today, we heard that there's a, um, a new at-home test that's very effective as well. Um, from public health perspective, you know, testing is an important fact and I, I agree with you, I think that the more tests that you have, the more people you are gonna find that are gonna be positive. And that's a positive thing because we're able to actually contact those folks, give them information about the particular disease and actually stop the chain of transmission at that point. And I think that the majority of people that we've contacted, uh, have been compliant and they've understand, you know, the rationale for public health, uh, public health isn't rocket science for the most part, I mean, it's really practical, uh, prevention methods that we've used for really many, many years. Um, so with respect to the test, I think they're getting better and we're getting better targeted at this and in combination of the, of the contact tracing, isolation and quarantine where needed and then ultimately having the ability to go on the offensive now, uh, with the vaccine, we really do have the opportunity to really take this, uh, and go on the offensive. So, um, you know, like I said, I mean, I think, I agree with you, I think they can get better, but I mean, we're, we're really doing the best with what we got.
I have, I have one more question, I, I'm glad that, you know, there's another vaccine that's out there, got approved, you know, but when you just talk to normal people, people wanna know, why does it take so long? And what I read in the last week, Moderna had the code from China, January 13th and within a weekend, they were able to make this vaccine that finally got approved today.
Yeah.
You know, what is the normal process, I mean, it seems to me that it should have taken a little bit. Yeah, what is the normal process? I mean, it seems to me that it should have taken a little bit sooner to have this out in the market rather than now.
Well, this is a record-setting um, vaccine from the process from when they started it to when they actually started to put it into people's arms yesterday. Um, so normally, I'll give you an example of the Mumps vaccine that we have, took four years to develop from start to finish. So a lot of the work that, um, you know, the government pays for, in in this case, for the mRNA mRNA-type vaccines, it was really came out that technology from cancer research. So they leverage that type of research to be able, and the science that goes along with it, to be able to really bring this vaccine. Uh, you know, they say warp speed, and they're pretty dang close to being to to doing that. Uh, for a vaccine to be ready after the discovery of a particular virus, to be ready in less than a year is is a miracle. It is absolutely a miracle that that they did it that fast. Uh, public health is not generally a quick uh, science. Um, you know, we have, we we plot along to be able to take care of situations. And in, you know, so to see something that comes to fruition this quickly uh, is really amazing to me as a public health professional.
Great. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, um, Charles, thank you uh, for speaking tonight and keeping us updated and informing us of really just how severe this is. Um, in the last month or over the last month, maybe a month ago, I probably knew three people that had been COVID-positive. Uh, now I know probably about fifteen. One is my sister who has lupus. Another is my brother-in-law, who is in the hospital right now with COVID and double pneumonia. I've never ever seen anybody struggle the way this guy is struggling. He's fit. He's a runner. Um, and um, to hear him struggle to just say a few words, let alone breathe, is utterly terrifying. So um, so I think it's okay that we're still in a little bit of a panic mode, quite frankly, because I think that that's the only thing that makes people really understand um, the severity of this virus and the fact that it is in fact a virus. It's not a disease that can be cured. It's a virus, and you really don't know what's going to happen. So so I do appreciate uh, the information that you provided us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, if there's no one else, um, thank you, Charlie, very much. We appreciate the update, and uh, obviously, we will attempt to keep Berlin uh, and our whole population as safe as possible. So.
Yeah, and 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 I just ask that as we start to get to the point uh, to where we have vaccine that's available for the first responders and ultimately for, you know, those most vulnerable populations, um, that we're ready to work with the town, and we just ask that you be responsive um, for when we're asking for information, for rosters and things of that nature, uh, to be able to get that information to us in a timely manner so that we can act on it, uh, take advantage of of the vaccine that we have when we get it, uh, and be able to get it into the community as quickly as possible. We thank you for all your help and your support through uh, this very trying time. Uh, my folks are tired, I'll tell you right now, but we got a a nice um, point of invigoration over the last couple of days uh, because we can start to see, hopefully, um, the light at the end of the tunnel. So thank you very much for your support. And as any time that y'all need us uh, to update, we're just a call away.
All right, thank you, Charlie. We we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Have a good night, y'all.
All right, you too. Um, okay, uh, topic number two.
Topic number two, and uh, Councilor Penner, sir, good to see you. Your video is working. A miracle of Christmas. Wonderful to see you there in person. So um, second item is the Knights of Columbus property. Uh, I'm not sure if Joe Bajowski is here, but we had an option that uh, needs to get extended until March thirty-first. You heard from him on November twenty-fourth about the plans to uh, secure funding for the uh, affordable senior housing project. But he needs a few more months, and that meeting he had mentioned by March, uh, we should have, or we should know for sure um, the status of funding, and then also uh, plans to have a shovel in the ground in the summer. So what you have in front of you is a request to extend the option. I'm not sure if Mr. Bajowski is on the line. If you are, please speak. Otherwise, uh, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so uh, we yeah, we did hear from him, and it, you know, seemed like uh, good news last time that he uh, seemed to have put together a a funding package that that will work, and uh, that's some great progress uh, from where we were uh, a while ago. So, you know, we appreciate that work and and coming up with the funding. So uh, if there's no other questions, we can go ahead and take a motion on this. I think uh,
You're muted, Brendan.
There you go.
I was muted. Uh, I moved to authorize the town manager to extend the option agreement between the town and the Berlin Housing Authority from an end date of November thirtieth, two thousand twenty, to a new date of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Second on that? Charlie?
Charlie.
Uh, Charlie, anyone?
I'll set, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Don. Okay, so um, there's no further um, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose? Okay, so moved. Thank you. Number three.
Great, thank you. Number three is a uh, fulfill a vacancy on the Board of Finance as a result of uh, Mr. Richards resigning on the Board of Finance. And um, you have some material with you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't have uh, I I know, I know, I don't have the new persons. Uh, I mean, Kate, you mentioned it to me. I didn't, I don't have it in front of me, but um, I know we we had originally a different candidate, which unfortunately, we found out didn't work. Joe Rosimowitz's uh, application didn't work due to uh, some of the restrictions in the charter. So we have a new candidate, and I'm sorry, I don't have his name in front of me. I know we.
Raul Fernandez? Is it the Raul Fernandez?
Yes, okay, that's the name, yes. So um, if, and I, again, I don't have it in front of me. I apologize. Uh, I know we'll send out later today. Um, what, any information, uh, either Peter or or Joanna?
Yeah, I I. Hi, Raul. Raul is um, uh, as you can see from his application, I know you don't have it, Mark, but he's lived in Berlin for about three years. Um, he lives here with his wife and his two children. He's been a wonderful uh, member of the DTC. He's very insightful, a really smart man, um, considerate, thoughtful, uh, just very level-headed. Um, I think he'd be just a a wonderful to the Board of Finance.
Okay, and I, um, he 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 has some budget experience in his with.
He does.
Employment, right?
Yes, he does.
Yeah, can, Councilor V. Chair, I just, I was, I have his application here. I just can't read what it says, why he feels he's qualified for this appointment. I had a problem reading it. Kate, can you read it? Or somebody else help me out with the sentence?
It says, Donna, just so you know, this is Councilor Nagat. It says, I handle seven-figure budgets, uh, leadership roles, and a uh, different, let's see, different something perspective. Couldn't really read that that last.
Yeah, no, I had a hard time reading the whole thing. Okay, I was just curious.
Okay.
Mayor, he wasn't a D on the call, so he may be.
He was earlier.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think he's still here. I just muted, so I'm not. Raul, are you still there?
I still am. Hello, everybody.
Hey, Raul. How are you?
Good, good. Nice to see you all. Uh, yes, so my first word, I believe, was a cult, different culture perspective. Um, I think we're all in this together, and I'm willing to help anyone, and uh, anything done to the best of the town.
Excellent.
That's great. Um, you sure? You sure you want to do this? Just kidding. It'll be uh.
It's Christmas. It is Christmas.
No baxy.
No baxy. It is Christmas, so.
It'll be uh, it'll be interesting, and maybe actually someday's fun, too. I don't know about that word, but but uh, it will certainly be interesting, and we certainly uh, you know, look forward to you volunteering to help the town. We appreciate that. It's uh, sometimes difficult to find volunteers, and uh, you know, it is uh, some some time out of your life, but we we appreciate that.
Absolutely. It's my sincere pleasure. Thank you all.
Okay, so uh, anything else? Kristen, do you have something else or no? Kristen, no? We good?
No, you might, uh, Mark, I appreciate that, and thanks for that.
Yeah, so we're good. We'll go ahead and take a a motion on this.
Sure, I could do that. Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Mr. Raul Fernandez to fill the vacancy on the Board of Finance for a term ending November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you. Second on that?
My seconds.
Thank you very much. Uh, no, no, no other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congrats. Any pose? So moved. Um, congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Hi, Kristen.
Is there anyone that can hear me on this phone? Anyone?
I can hear you.
You're kidding?
Yes, I can hear.
No? I I've been trying to get in since the Audience of Citizens. Could I, could I say something after the agenda then? Could you go back to Audience of Citizens? Because I've been trying to speak, but I was muted by somebody over there the whole time.
Um, yeah, you could go ahead and uh, you could, you could speak now. Sorry about that.
Are you sure?
Yes.
All right. Well, it would have been more appropriate during the Audience of Citizens because the young man who spoke about the um, Pistol Creek uh, actually kind of ties in with what I am going to talk about. So uh, buckle yourselves in, because I'm going to talk about Bicentennial Park again. This is Mary Catherine LaRose.
Can we get name and address, please? Thank you.
Yeah, name and address, yeah.
Twenty-six Woodruff Lane in Kensington.
Okay.
Okay, so um, uh, fifteen years of neighbor complaints dating back to January two thousand five. So what the town did was put up parking, no parking signs in front of the houses that were nearest to the park. But still, the neighbors were not happy. The truth is, the neighbors on Winezap Road near Bicentennial Park will never be happy until they have forced restrictions on the use of the park to such extremes that they will have that beautiful area as their own private playground. Winezap residents don't want dog owners to park on the cul-de-sac. You know what? The dog owners don't want to park there either. We want safe off-road place to open our car door, let our children and pets out to walk in the park. It's called a parking lot. Yet, on January thirteenth, two thousand five, seventeen residents from by from Winezap submitted a petition against the establishment of a parking lot inside Bicentennial Park, and they continue to push for a leash ordinance. Now, I collected twenty-nine signatures on a petition in two hours at the Berlin Fair on Friday afternoon in two thousand nineteen. All were Berlin residents. I'm quite sure I could have gotten a hundred or more if I'd worked at the fair on Saturday and Sunday. Now, my petition was worded this way. A petition regarding Bicentennial Park. With the understanding that all dogs brought to Bicentennial Park must be well-behaved, friendly and friendly dogs and obey their owners, and with the understanding that all dog owners bringing their dogs to Bicentennial Park must pick up after their dogs in the open fields and along the path. Do you agree that dog owners should continue to be allowed to walk with their dogs off-leash at Bicentennial Park as they have done for thirty years? And as I said, in two hours, I got twenty-nine signatures. Um, the next thing I want to talk about is safety. It's not safe for park users to have to park their vehicle in the cul-de-sac, open their doors to poss- with possible other cars entering or leaving the cul-de-sac, and let their leash dogs out onto the road in order to then enter the park. It's especially unsafe for park users with dogs and children to let them out on the cul-de-sac. The Bicentennial Park users need a safe parking area inside the confines of the park gate where they can safely exit their cars with their, with or without dogs or children. Um, now, there has been in the past some mention made, and I heard it tonight again, uh, made in the path of a conservation restriction and easement, which the town actually put on certain pieces of town land, as if this would prohibit the creation of a parking area at Bicentennial Park. It seems logical that if the town instituted the restrictions, it can modify them if need be. As worded, I don't see that the that a small parking lot would violate the restrictions anyway. And I've read the um, the um, restrictions. Um, and my last point is regarding the Ordnance Committee's consideration to modify our existing leash ordinance. I researched towns surrounding Berlin in late two thousand nineteen. I gave my summary to the Ordnance Committee in January twenty twenty. I could not find a leash ordinance for Southington and Farmington. I do not think they have them. Rocky Hill, Newington, Plainville, and Meriden have leash ordinances, similar to what is being considered for Berlin. But what these towns do not have is an area that has been enjoyed for thirty years as an off-leash area by dog lovers from Berlin and surrounding towns. You cannot wipe away thirty years of past practice by changing a few words in an ordinance. The town will find it unenforceable and more trouble than it could possibly be worth. It's time, after fifteen years of controversy, to finally do the right thing and build that parking lot. And to the Ordnance Committee, whatever you do, leave Bicentennial Park out of it. And one final thing, because I didn't know someone was going to speak about Pistol Creek. Um, Pistol Creek is completely, well, you can go ahead and make it an off-leash area if you want to, but it's not going to supplant Bicentennial Park. It is not at all acceptable. So maybe a few dogs may go there with their owners, but it is in no way, shape, or form um, acceptable. Um, especially when you compare it to Bicentennial Park. So that's it. Thank you very much, and I'm so glad I got in, and I appreciate the fact that you put me in the middle because I was very frustrated because evidently everyone was muted, and I was trying to get in and sit at during the Audience of Citizens, and I, no one was hearing me. So I appreciate that you got me in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And 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 as you know, as we mentioned uh, in in this meeting, that the audience, the Ordnance Committee um, discussion is still open uh, to be continued. So no one has changed or ended anything. We're trying to find the best solution for the entire community. Um, again, as a community that has an off-leash park, very unusual to have it. Um, we're going to keep it uh, in some form somewhere. Um, and uh, we will, you know, we'll we'll continue down that road uh, in the new year and try and uh, resolve it. So anyway, thank you very much. And uh,
Thank you.
We'll appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll go on to number four, I guess, right?
Yes, number four is a affirmative uh, affirmation of the affirmative action policy related to the Senior Community Center grant. It's a requirement that uh, from the Boarding Agency, and Chris Edge, you on the line? Do you want to add anything to the conversation?
Um, just the fact that we had done this in a previous year. This is just a reaffirmation, need to have it, care of the grant we got for the community senior center design, and you covered the rest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Yeah, we've uh, we we know we just have to renew uh, renew this uh, um, agenda item. So we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Mayor, I uh, move to adopt the attached nondiscrimination resolution to affirm that the town will follow the nondiscrimination provisions of Sections four A dash sixty and four A dash sixty A of the Connecticut General Statutes related to the grant for the planning and design of a senior community center.
Thank you. Second on that?
My second on.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, if there's no other comments, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any pose? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you too, Chris.
Agenda item number five is uh, the need to uh, have a non-budgeted defined benefit appropriation to uh, to the police pension. Uh, Kevin Delaney, who's going to give you a summary?
Good evening. Um, over the last few years, we have been seeing an increased number of retirements as those in our closed defined benefit. retirements as those in our closed defined benefit plan have continued to age. The plan doesn't have a strong fund balance, and we've been implementing a pay-as-you-go strategy, which is utilizing the strong unassigned fund balance that we have within the general fund. We are looking at two additional retirements in early calendar 2021. With those two retirements, that will have the town over the last four years paying out nine of the seventeen members who were active participants at that time. So the town has been effectively executing this strategy. As interest rates have reached historic lows, the liability of the pension plan operates opposite to that. So as interest rates go down, our liability goes up, and as a result, the payouts that are happening now are considerably higher than the town paid out even as far, as recently as a year, year and a half ago. As a result, I'm coming tonight to ask you to approve a non-budgeted appropriation of $2 million that will fund two additional payouts and would leave us with eight active members and continue successfully executing our pay-as-go strategy.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So, so two addition, so eight, eight left after these two payouts?
Correct.
Okay, and, and this amount covers two, two, those two new payouts?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay, well, at least we're, the numbers are going down for the people that are in the, in the pension plan. So that, that's a good thing, you know, ultimately. So we're going in the right direction.
Mark?
Yes?
Since it isn't budgeted, where's the money coming from?
It's coming from unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which is basically the savings account of the town. It's not assigned to any particular project. It's not committed. It's not encumbered in any way. We've been building up this balance over the last few years. To the extent the town does not utilize a surplus at the end of any particular year, it goes to the unassigned fund balance, and it's for purpose, it, the purposes are pretty much wide open to your discretion. Just a couple of months ago, you used it to make a quick appropriation to secure body cameras and dash cameras from the police so that the town could take advantage of better reimbursement rates for that grant. So it's an opportunity for you to either pay down on liabilities like this as they come up, or to take advantage of, of other opportunities.
So in that sense, it's a rainy day, punk?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we, considering we last budget year, Kevin, we didn't, we voted not to, we just left it in the fund, right? We knew we would just appropriate it when necessary, right?
Yeah, this, the pension, the actuarial determined contribution has not been budgeted in about three years, but we have continued non-budgeted appropriations during the year to meet that requirement and to fund payouts as they come up.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for Kevin? Hearing none. We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to appropriate $2 million of the general fund unassigned fund balance to the pension actuarial funding account within the general fund to fund projection, projected pension payouts pending approval of the Board of Finance.
Thank you. Second on that?
My second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, so, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number six is a request to purchase fourteen laptops. You probably recall, we started buying laptops for the department heads and others in each departments to allow them to connect remotely and also as part of the business continuity plan. And there were some of these laptops that we are replacing on, you know, older and not protected by virus license, et cetera. And this probably will complete most of our purchases, and with this will bring everyone up to a fairly decent, I would say, capability to work remotely 24/7. And these laptops are not in addition to what people have. It's instead of, and some of the ones that, desktops that we have will be used by others as part of the replacement program. I have Brian Freeman. I don't know whether you have met him. He, we just hired him as the Director of Information Technology. He has been doing an outstanding job at the Berlin PD. Now he has oversight of the town and the Berlin PD and the library and working collaboratively, collaboratively with the Board of Education as well. So Brian, I'll turn it over to you if you want to add anything.
Okay, thanks, Arusha. I just wanted to say good evening and address the Mr. Mayor and the council, and the first time I've had an opportunity to speak with you. Hopefully sometime in the near future, we'll get to speak in person. As was mentioned, these will be replacement laptops for desktop computers that are aging, and if there's still any life left in the PCs that we're replacing, we're going to try to use the less critical areas. And we did get a state quote pricing contract, so it is a good price. It's actually lower than Dell Direct price, so I feel that that was good. And we also found the priced laptop for some of the people that need less demanding, that have less demanding tasks. So we have the Dell Latitude as opposed to the Precision for some of the less demanding users. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to, if I try to answer them for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brian, and congratulations on your new position. Happy, happy to have you and appreciate all your work on behalf of the town before and for the future. So appreciate it. Any questions for Brian? If not, I know we've discussed these laptops before to keep the town running. People are not able to make it in for whatever reason. Obviously, now COVID is, is the main reason. So now we'll go ahead and take a motion. No other comments?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I would do that. Welcome aboard, Brian. I move to approve the purchase of fourteen Dell laptops from Winslow Technology Group of Botham, Mass. For a total not to exceed $22,000 using state contract number 18PSX0264AG.
Thank you. Take a second on that?
My second.
Thanks, Charlie. Here we know other comments or questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Agenda item number seven is a request to waive the town of Berlin bidding requirements for the purchase of a fire apparatus from Pierce Manufacturing. And we have Jim Simons to give you some background, tell you what we are doing.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, Jim. How are you?
Hey, Jim.
How you doing? First off, I'd like to recognize that we have members of the South Kensington Fire Department with us that sat on the Apparatus Committee, and that is Chief Andy Rubiak, Assistant Chief Matt Pepe, Captain Tyler St. Jarre, and firefighter Bobby Michaelak. They're also on here so they can answer some questions as we get going.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So as, as we proceeded after we got the okay to begin looking at specs and going to look at fire apparatus, we looked at what we previously did, and what we previously did was we purchased some apparatus that I won't say failed us, that are, but we're not really happy with. From different manufacturer point of views, from different manufacturers going out of business and leaving us in a void where some parts are not available, and we keep on having problems with those. So we looked at that. We also looked at what we did right in the past years, and we currently have four Pierce products out there that are serving the town well, and the apparatus committees from going forward, which was the Board of Fire Chiefs, voted back in January to move forward with that process. And so we continued with that process. The Apparatus Committee from South Kensington went out and they looked at a couple trucks, and they came back to the Board of Fire Chiefs, and they decided that they would like to have, or would, would like to purchase what's called a PUC, P U C, which is Pierce Ultimate Configuration Apparatus. Now, now this, this apparatus brings a lot of benefits to not only the South Kensington Fire Department, but the town. So we'll start off with the South Kensington Fire Department. The South Kensington Fire Department, I, we all know is a very small firehouse out there built out of an old school, which has a very small base. The pick, the PUC configuration allows the apparatus to be shortened so that it will fit into that firehouse. Along with that, for the service center or the garage down here, we also understand, or we also looked at this apparatus for a maintenance point of view, and unlike the previous pumper's where we have to actually crawl into the pump panels, the chain valves, and do things like that, this configuration, actually, those valves are on, are very easy and accessible. So it's a positive there. So we began to build specifications. As we began to build specifications, the apparatus began to take shape. You see that there's, right now, it's at $815,000. Quite expensive. What this apparatus will do for the town, though, is it combines two pieces of apparatus together into one piece, which is going to make the fire service not only in non-hydrated areas, but throughout the whole town, more manpower-friendly. We'll be able to do what we do with two apparatuses now with one. So, so it's a positive in that, that point of view. The Pierce apparatus, and we have four other ones, as I mentioned before, we have Engine 10, Truck 9, Tower Ladder 3, and Engine 2. We have those cabs basically set up or configured so that they are easily trained and easily used, so that they can basically be used or trained by any firefighter operator that's out there. And this apparatus, even though it has a different cab on it, the configuration of the controls within the cab are much alike those other ones. So it gives us a positive there. There's just, there's so many positives to, to bring this forward, but one of the bigger negatives that we have is that January 1, there's anticipated to be a 3% price increase, and we're trying to get a locked-in price prior to January 1. So that's why we brought this to you now. So I, I guess I'm open for some questions? The committee's open for some questions?
Okay, Jim. Hey, thank you, and thank you to the committee. I know this is part of your bigger plan to replace some of our, some of the ancient equipment, from what I remember from past presentations, and I know that, although it's expensive going forward, we know this equipment is expensive. Obviously, it's necessary to protect the town, protect our, our volunteer firefighters. But we also know that you're, you're working on efficiencies where, obviously, we're upgrading the equipment, getting new equipment, but I think the, the plan, right, part of the plan was to downsize the number of apparatus in the town, which is great. So we appreciate all that. You know, obviously, but budget is always a concern, but safety of yourselves, the firefighters in our town is, is, is number one. So we appreciate what you've done and the homework you've done on this. You know, we've had various presentations, and it's all great information for us, so.
This, this piece of apparatus is, is going to downsize the fleet. It's going to remove one of the American Le France apparatuses that the, the company went out of business, and it's hard to find parts for.
Remember that, yeah.
And it's going to make the fire department more efficient. A, a normal, and getting into firefighting, but a normal apparatus, a, a large truck in town of Berlin usually carries a thousand gallons of water, or most of them carry 750 or less. So by combining these two pieces together and getting that apparatus on the air and coming to, no matter where it is in town, we're, we're actually going to deploy 2,000 gallons a minute on the initial piece coming out, instead of having additional manpower to have to run and maintain additional apparatus.
No, that's great, too. No, that's all great to hear. No, you guys, guys have done a lot of homework and, you know, obviously have a, from what I, you know, from personally, what I've seen, a very solid plan. So appreciate that and appreciate trying to get this thing through so we don't have to spend more money with the price increase. So we certainly appreciate that, too. So anyone else? There's any comments for Jim or, or maybe to the committee?
I'd like to just make a comment. Councilor V. Chair, thank you all for doing what you're doing. You certainly don't have an easy task. It sounds as if this will be somewhat of a savings because it's going to be two for the price of one, if you will, in terms of, like you said, manpower, insurance, running another vehicle. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's, it's going to be downsizing the fleet, maintenance on the vehicle, manpower for operating it, insurance, everything will be decreased.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none? We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to waive the town's bidding requirements and award the purchase of one fire apparatus, engine taker number 12, from Pierce Manufacturing, an amount not to exceed $815,000, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second on that?
My second to motion.
Thank you, Charlie. Here we know other comments or questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Stay safe out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Agenda item number eight is the 2021 Early Order Chemical Program. And Jerry Salvio is on the line. You probably recall about a month ago, John Zuck resigned as the Director of Simuland Golf, and Garia stepped up, and he's right now the Acting Director of Golf, and he has a couple of requests, and I'll turn it over to him, Jerry.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of things. We have two items up tonight, first being the Early Order Chemical Program, and what I'm requesting is the town to allow us to purchase agency early order chemicals in the amount of $86,369. By doing this and having billing de-post July 1, we'll realize the savings of about $13,200. The agency products are products that manufacturers set the price. You can't go from one seller to another and get a better deal. It doesn't work that way. They dictate the price. So by doing this, again, we're realizing the savings of a little over $13,000. It's products we're using regardless as compared to the off-patent products, which they have their own issues. So that's my first request. If I'll take any questions, if anybody has any.
Okay, thank, thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Jerry, for stepping up and appreciate you bringing this to us and also looking to, you know, save us a little money for something we obviously have to purchase anyway. So appreciate that. Any other questions for Jerry? Hearing none? We'll go ahead and take a motion. Brendan? Charlie? Someone?
Muted, Brendan.
Brendan, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I move to waive the bidding procedure and purchase chemicals from Haralls and Winfield in the amount not to exceed $86,369, as this is in the best interest of the town of Berlin. The chemical purchases are through the Early Order Program of BASF, Syngenta, Seepro, and Bayer Chemical Companies.
Thank you. Second on that?
My second to motion.
Thank you, Charlie. Here we know, no other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Jerry?
Okay, second. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Okay, second item, the ability to exceed the $10,000 spending threshold that we've currently reached with their products corporation. The majority of our equipment is Toro, and they are the sole source provider for that particular brand, Toro, obviously. We anticipate spending an additional $6,000 in this current fiscal year. So what I'm asking for is that additional $6,000 not to exceed $16,000 at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, any questions for, uh, Jerry? Hearing none? We'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to waive the town's bidding procedure for Turf Products to supply parts and equipment as they are the sole provider for Toro equipment in the amount not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second on that?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10 is, uh, brush grinding in disposal. This is related to the tropical storm Isaiah. And, uh, Mike Ahn is here to give you a recap.
Yes, sir. Can you, uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Awesome. Okay. Um, after August 4th, when, uh, tropical stormy Saez, um, blew into town, the highway department and parks and rec, uh, parks and grounds department, um, collected a lot of brush. Our last estimate was like over seventy-five hundred cubic yards. Most of it is across from the high school on Patterson Way. We have another smaller pile behind the animal control building. So we put out a bid to grind and dispose, um, instead of hauling it out the way it is, we're going to bring, have a tub grinder brought in, grind it and have the company bring it to a certified composting facility. We put a bid out, we got eight bids. Um, the range was from twenty-seven thousand to almost eighty-eight thousand. And I think the ones for the higher end were not in town. Um, Stacks Construction, who is in town, had the lowest bid at twenty-seven thousand. They've also done a similar contract with us for sweeping disposal last year. I mean, they're also one of our, um, plowing contractors, so they're well known to us. So we're recommending that we, uh, select them for this contract. And we want to throw a 10% contingency because I have a feeling we're going to be adding some more brush, um, from a ver, from the tip, from Timberland, I would think. Right, Jerry?
Hang on, Mike. Okay, uh, yes, I would love to be part of that.
So I think, I think we're good. So we want to throw that contingency in to take care of the Timberland's brush pile from the storm. Um, so that would be a total of twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred. And, um, we have, we'll be taking that out of contractual services.
Okay, great, Mike. Thank you. Yeah, I, uh, happened to drive by that pile by the high school today. That's quite the, uh, pile of debris.
That's right.
Very impressive. Uh, thanks for collecting it all. I know we got to get rid of it now, so, uh,
Right.
Appreciate that. All right. Uh, and if we have any other comments or questions? If not, hey, I, what, just one quick question. The state, they don't, they won't help us with this, right? Does the state?
As far as I know, that we haven't received a positive declaration that this is a FEMA, uh, you know, that qualifies for FEMA reimbursement. And I don't, um, there's various theories about why, but we haven't gotten, I don't, a positive or a negative. So I'm still hopeful. And what we did was we, um, focused this RFP so it's totally related to the storm debris. So if they do come in and say, yes, Berlin can submit it, all of this would be submitted.
Okay, great. So we can get reimbursed for it, um, if, if we do and spend it and it fits into the FEMA.
Right.
Scheme. Okay. Okay, good. Well, I appreciate that. Um, all right. So, uh, any other comments or questions? If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract agreement, number 2021-07, with Stacks Construction of Berlin, Connecticut, to perform brush grinding and disposal services related to storm Isaiah and the amount of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred.
All right, thank you. Second, second on that?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, here we know other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Agenda item number 11 is a, uh, referral of a section 824 review, Kensington Road Bridge, Road Bridge Replacement. And Mike, you want to give a recap on that?
Sure. Um, this is the bridge that's right up here, um, just north of the town hall entry drive by Brook Street. DOT has, uh, deemed it functionally obsolete, so it needs to be reworked. Back in, uh, 2017, before my time here, staff put in a request to, uh, get funding, uh, through the Lots of Program for a maintenance or more of a rehab approach. During the back and forth over the ensuing two years, DOT pushed for a total replacement, which, uh, we agreed to and they redefunded. So, um, DOT has committed to fund us by, uh, approximately 1.96 million dollars for the construction. The town will fund the design permitting and taking you through the bid process to, to select a contractor. Um, as part of this process, before it was a maintenance, quote unquote, a maintenance or rehabilitation pro, uh, project, didn't require an 824 review. Now it's a total replacement. So we have to get an 824 review from P and Z on this project, both for, to perform with the state, the state requirements and also for bond, bond council. So the, um, we also want to, um, get town council authorization for, um, Roche to sign the commitment to fund the DOT in order to keep this process moving. And I should note, this does not lock the town, him signing and returning it does not lock the town into anything. It's more of a, yes, we've received it, you can back out if you want to. So there's no, there's no real strings attached, but it's something I'd like to get your authorization for Roche to, uh, sign.
Okay, great. Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Um, any other comments or questions on this? Pretty, uh, straightforward. Um, go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to refer the matter to replacing the Kensington Road Bridge, number 03657, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a section 824 review, as per the Connecticut general statutes, and to authorize the town manager to sign and return the Connecticut Department of Transportation's commitment to fund dated November 23, 2020.
Thank you. Second on that?
I second the motion.
Thanks, Charlie. Um, uh, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So moved. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 12 is a bid waiver for Pasquarela Electric Corporation. This is for streetlight maintenance. Mike, you're back again?
Yes, um, the streetlight saga continues, but we're starting to make some headway. We terminated the contract with Siemens Mobility because they were not responding. They were not processing our work orders. They were not following up with EverSource's request on feeder issues. And they did a couple of installations that I was personally very unhappy with. So we terminated their contract. They had a five-year contract. We terminated it after one year. It's just wasn't working out. So, um, we, during that transition, we did some research and found, um, Pasquarela Electric, they're a, an EverSource, um, emergency electric contractor. They're, they do all their work as well, but they're actually used by EverSource, um, during, in fact, the past, uh, EC, ECIA storm, they were used, um, actually around town and in other areas. So we researched, we looked at their, their rates. They were cheaper than both Siemens Mobility and Tanco, who were the, was the previous streetlight contractor. Um, we did a short-term PO for them. They have worked out wonderfully. They call us back. They go out, they do the work. They're right now, they're at the end of their PO. We will be doing an RFP for on-call contractors and I hope that they actually submit, and you know, a, a quote and, um, a package. But in the interim, I'd like to get a backlog or backlog knocked down a bit. So I'm asking for another fifty-five thousand dollars on top of their purchase, their existing purchase order. Um, streetlights are running about five grand a clip to, if we do a full base pole fixture replacement. So that doesn't, um, go too far, but I think we can get a lot done and then we'll do the on-call contract and have maybe a couple, a, a, a couple of smaller contracts in addition to Pasquarela to choose from if their rates are, um, you know, reasonable.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Um, all right. Well, we gotta, we gotta fix our streetlights. So glad we found someone that hopefully can do, do a good job on it. So, uh, with that, we'll go ahead and take a motion if there's no other comments? Sure. Mike, have a question? Councilor Luddy?
Sure.
What's, what's the backlog?
Um, we, well, you're on, you're on our list, Brendan. Um, we have, we have, um, we've actually just, they replaced two poles yesterday. One was on, uh, New Park Drive and one was on Peachtree that Siemens Mobility had put the base in, but never put the pole on. So that was one. There are a few poles that have come down with two accidents or just because they rot it. Literally the wooden poles are rotting at the bases. We also have a list from EverSource who, they, they did an inspection, the forgetting that they sold the poles to us. And they let us know then, oh, by the way, you have problems at like seven or eight poles because of the, um, the old wooden poles are rotting at the bases. So that is on our list. And we have, I don't know how many outages that Lisa has been taking in her office just on the heads involved and the fixtures being burnt out. So the list is, um, I think on the poles, we're making some headway on the outages. Once I get, we get this money, if you do approve it, we're going to knock out a lot of those outages, just sending the work orders to, uh, to Pasquarela.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Mike?
Mark? Yes.
Um, just a couple of questions. Uh, are these the LED lights?
Yes.
Okay, I have to put in my obligatory request that when the streets are done, that they do the parks. I mean, we were, Brendan can remember when we were promised this years ago. And, um, I don't know how feasible it is at this point, but just keep us in mind, uh, Mike.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, yeah, Peter, I think Doug and Woody are, I know it's on their minds and I don't know exactly what's, what's, what's coming forward, but I know that is in the works. I don't know as far as the funding goes, where that's coming from yet, but I know it's, uh, you're, you're, you're not the only one thinking about this, is I guess my answer. Thank you. Sure.
All right, thank you. Um, anybody, anyone else? Comments? Hearing none? Um, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Okay. I will, uh, make a motion to authorize the town manager to waive the bidding requirements and increase the purchase order to Pasquey Ariello Electric Corporation by fifty-five thousand dollars for town streetlight maintenance, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Okay, thank you. Second on this?
I second the motion.
Charlie, um, hearing no other comments, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Yeah. The one we wanted waiting for. Next agenda, the last one. Agenda item number 13 is the hard work of Councilor Luddy on the, uh, calendar for 2021, 22. And I believe, uh, Kate has put it in front of you.
Yeah. Um, so I know Brendan, you know, you have a tough committee you're on there. Imagine a lot of, a lot of fights with, uh, yourself and I and me.
Sure was.
I guess you got through it. You got some kind of consensus here for a calendar? That's good.
I have to thank Kate for the help on this.
Uh, there we go. Okay, good, good. Uh, nothing unusual here, right? From what I could see? Pretty normal, Kate and Brendan?
Pretty much.
Yeah, okay. All right. So if we have no, uh, comments?
I do have a couple questions, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But on a date. And I was trying to get that to come up in a better way than it did. But, um, I don't know what you want to do. Do you want to meet in the end of November, November 30th? So right now, election day is November 2nd. The swearing-in ceremony for the new, um, elected officers will be on the 16th. And you usually have your organizational meeting after that. But then I wasn't sure if you wanted to have a meeting the end of November or if you felt that that was okay.
Um, well, it's a good point. It does seem like there's kind of a big gap between the 19th and the 14th of December, right? So, um, hey, I, I mean, I would, you know, probably leave that 30th on there, uh, which seems like a very long way off and hopefully no COVID by November 30th of 2021. But, um, yeah, I would, I, I think I would leave it just, you know, we could handle whatever. That's a month. Otherwise it's a pretty big gap in between.
Yes. So you would have it on the, you're right, Mayor, it would be on the 19th. And then the next meeting won't be until the 16th, but you have the two meetings in October.
Right.
You have the meeting on the 30th. And then do you want to keep it where you have one meeting in December? Or do you want two meetings?
No, I think if we do the 30th in November, we keep, keep the 14th, right? That makes sense, everybody? Yeah. Keep the 14th.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Um, anybody else? Be good with all the other dates? No, uh, we didn't get in any vacation times necessarily, right? Looks like we're okay with most of those dates. Um, yeah, okay. All right. So if we're all good, we'll go ahead and, uh, take a motion.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I approve, move to approve the adoption of the town council meetings calendar for 2021 and, uh, in January of 2022.
Thank you. Second on that? Second, Charlie? Um, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed?
Opposed.
So moved. Thank you. Okay. Where are we? Where are we at now? Uh, Town Manager's Report. There we are, Roche.
Yeah, since, since you don't have to drive today, I can keep you in session for some time for all the updates of the town. So, uh, I'll, I'll keep it brief, but I have a few items I'd like to report. Um, so the, the first one, you're probably aware of this, uh, the town partners with, uh, CGI Communications. That's a group that, uh, you know, does all the videos for the town. If you go on the town's website, on the bottom right-hand corner, there's a, you have a series of, uh, town videos. Uh, there's a very nice, uh, video from the mayor, a welcome video. There's one about education of the town, education system, the quality of life, economic development, you know, public safety, uh, and community organizations. Uh, we have been, um, with them for three years and it's up time for us to renew the contract. We don't pay anything. Um, they've worked with the businesses and the businesses who like to do videos with them. Um, they work out of financial, um, transaction with this group. And, uh, so we'd like to continue doing that. But I would also ask all of you help. When you have time during the holidays, take a look at the videos and see if there's something that we can do better to advertise the town. The, the plan here is to, you know, showcase the town, to attract businesses, attract residents and, uh, share all the good stuff that we have in here with the larger and broader world out there. So, you know, this is just informational, but I would also ask you to, um, take a look at it and, um, provide any feedback you have to me, Chris Edge, Kate Wall. And actually there, the videos are pretty darn good, um, if you go and look at it. Um, do, do you have any questions on that before I move on to the next item?
Yeah.
Um, the second one is, uh, you're aware of this, we've been talking about, um, the Berlin High School backwork. We hired a consultant, uh, Innovative Construction and Design Solutions out of Guilford, Connecticut, that happened in October. Um, Doug Soluk and Jeff Kugno championed that. But we also had, uh, Don Lombardo, myself, Adam Salina. We all, uh, interviewed the groups and we selected this innovative construction. And their, a draft report is due around January 8th or so. So once we have that, you know, we'll, um, share that with, uh, the broader group and, um, share what their recommendations are. Uh, if you recall, the board of Fed came to us and said that, you know, in order for us to close the project, we'd like to hire an independent consultant. And, uh, we all agreed that whatever the consultant, uh, recommends, we'll go forward with it so that we can fix it, close the project and, uh, get the, the money that's, uh, with the federal government back to us.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad to see that's finally, uh, we're finally getting there.
It's getting there.
You know, we, we really, the longer I think we delay, um, to get that project closed and get it to the state, the more I worry about our reimbursements disappear with, uh, the various, various buzz, budget issues facing Connecticut. So yeah, that's great. That's moving along. I'm looking forward to seeing that in January.
Uh, speaking of, uh, RFPs, um, we also went through Speaking of RFPs, we also went through a. We have one out there now for the review of the VNA. This is something that the Board of Finance and we have discussed. For a while, the last couple of years, they've been, the census numbers have not been that great and. Unfortunately, with COVID and everything taking place, they have not been able to get much traction. So there's an RFP out there. If you go on the town's website, you'll see we are seeking a. Consultant actually for a proposal to give us some recommendations. To improve the operation and financial performance of the Berlin VNA. The, there are a series of. Ask that they asked, requested in the RFP, including, you know, specific recommendations to, you know, increase revenues, reduce costs, minimize. Economic impact for the town without, you know, compromising the quality of the services that we provide and benchmark them against similar home care. Nursing organizations. And then also, you know, look at, look at other, you know, home-based reporting models, home care operational, the town could deploy for ongoing management of the VNA. You know, any other recommendations they can give to minimize cost and, you know, marketing plans. So so far though, we have not received any questions or any consultants that have inquired. So the closing date for that is. When the anticipated, you know, contract start date is January eleventh. But RFPs request are due on January fourth, two thousand twenty-one. So the next time we meet, I'll have more updates. But in the meantime, I have also been talking to the director of the VNA. About how we might be able to do some. You know, cost containment. Regardless of consultant or not. And so I'll have more to share as we get to January and the budget cycle on that.
Appreciate that.
The next one is Timbaland Golf. This again. This is just planting the seed. Last year, we went to the ordinance committee. And you gave a waiver for one year, the council approved to not. Not to actually meet, cover all of the expenses for that particular year. But I think because of COVID and what has happened, revenues have been better than anticipated. And I've been working with Jerry and, you know, with the golf commission very soon. To have a similar recommendation for the next year's budget cycle. That we might be able to actually reduce some expenses and actually come ahead with the revenues as well. Remember, we, the council and the golf commission discussed getting together. Looking at, you know, ways of reducing expenses, but at the same time. You know, other ways that we might be able to bring in more revenues, looking at outsourcing options. You know, how we might be able to look at the broader golf course. I don't think we can complete all that in the next couple of months before the March budget deadline. But I, I think we, Jerry and I have been working to come up with a plan to. Have a, to be true to the ordinance and comply with what the ordinance says to have, you know. More revenues than expenses and we might, we should be able to do that. All right. You've probably heard about this, if not, our Director of Emergency Management and the Deputy Fire Marshal, Matt Odisho. He's announced his retirement. He's retiring in February. And we have posted the job and we'll be looking for someone to fill the vacancy. That's an important one. Especially with the image, emergency management component. Not that I'm saying the fire marshal component is not important, but there's nobody else with the emergency management. So it's a unique set of skills that we are asking to have both. We'll see what we get out and. Hopefully we'll be able to fill that void by February. And finally, some good news about our own town clerk. Kate Wall has been appointed as president of the Connecticut Town Clerks Association.
Yeah.
So her term begins in January, two thousand twenty-one. And it's a big deal. First of all, it's a nice way to get the Berlin name out there in the state of Connecticut. So you're going to see all the other town clerks hearing from Kate with the town of Berlin name. It is a great opportunity for her also to grow and. Be engaged with everything that's going on with the Secretary of State Office. And of course, with elections coming up and all, she'll be front and center. So I'm really proud of accomplishment and we should all be in the town of Berlin.
Congratulations, Kate.
Congratulations, Kate. Great news.
Way to go, Kate.
Good. Nice, nice.
Would that all stop and? Give you an opportunity to ask questions? If you have.
Thank you for, for all that and, you know, I, I know it's not council communications yet, but. Just thank you and town staff and really everyone in Berlin. I think we've been, you know, despite COVID and other. Issues, we've really done a great job, I think, this past year. Unfortunately, lost some people to COVID. That's horrible. And, you know, infection rate is up a little bit, but despite all that, the town, you know, continues on. People are, you know, abiding by, you know, whatever requirements we have, trying to keep everybody safe and. You know, I just, I guess what amazes me is the economic development. I, I'm really amazed by our small business owners that have opened. And been able to open over the last few months. You know, with all the ribbon cuttings that have gone on that they, first of all, they have the fortitude to do it in a, in a very difficult time for, for any business owner. And we've had new restaurants that have opened too, which is incredible during this difficult time. But I know it's been with the assistance of the town. I know the town, we've kept it running. Roche, appreciate that. And Kate and everyone at town hall. To keep it running and also we kept it safe and, you know, we kept. The permit process going and everybody pulled together and, you know, whether it's the police department part of it, everyone in the town. You know, we're working together and I think that's what it takes to keep us safe and moving forward. So I, I'm, I applaud everybody. I'm, you know, amazed. I mean, you know. I guess the council will take a little bit of credit, but it's, it's, it's everyone, you know, together and, you know. What you see going on across the country and different towns here, even in Connecticut, we, we've, I think, you know, done a pretty good job based upon what I could see. Other local towns even. So, you know, just want to kind of throw that out there and appreciative of everyone and. Glad to see we're doing the best we can and doing, I think, pretty well under the circumstances. Obviously, it's not perfect, but. We're doing the best we can and, and that's good. And just make sure everybody stays safe moving forward.
Great, thank you.
So we got the special committee reports. I don't, we haven't had any. We had the ordinance committee, so probably in the, in the new year, we'll. Go ahead and do another ordinance committee at some point. We'll figure that out in January, Roche. And. Now we have our council communications. Anyone? Council communications?
Yeah, I, I would like to say something. I think that we should all be aware that this evening history. Made in the town of Berlin. It was brought to my attention earlier this evening. That the appointment of Raul Fernandez. Is the first time that a person of color and of Hispanic descent was appointed to the Board of Finance. So, so I think that's absolutely fantastic, but in the same sense, it's a little unsettling. And so I think that it's extremely important for us moving forward to pay particular attention and make every effort. To try to diversify our boards and commissions. But, but again, congratulations to Raul and I think that's something that we need to pay attention to.
Thank you, Joanne. Anyone else?
Mark?
Yeah.
It's Peter.
Hey, Pete.
I know you can't see because of the glare up my forehead. Apologize for that.
I could see.
You know, it's, it's been quite a year. I remember meeting in, in the Board of Ed and we asked everyone to. Listen to the CDC as far as distancing and et cetera. And, you know. We've lost family and friends this year. It's been a tough year for all of us. But I think there's, there's light at the end of the tunnel. I think we have to stay the course. Let's pray twenty twenty-one is better. And that. We're all here in, in, in twenty twenty-one and beyond and. As Mark said, it's, it's not the council that did anything, but it's all of us. By observing the, the social distancing and the masks. And just like to end up by saying Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Anyone else from the council? I, I want to, you know, I want to add too that I talked to Brian Bedigny today. And I think it was yesterday, actually, but unfortunately, he's sick. I, I don't know if he has COVID and unfortunately, but he's doing okay. But he did tell me, despite his personal circumstance, and he, he's okay, he's getting better. That the school district too is doing pretty well, he said. He, under the circumstances, you know, they put a lot of time and effort into it over the summer and. Throughout this whole timeframe. So, but he said, you know. Everyone's fairly happy, you know, we all know, everyone's fairly happy, but don't receive a lot of complaints from parents and, and other folks. So he said, they're doing pretty well too. You know, so that, that's also good to hear. I just want to throw that in there. And same, same from me. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everyone. Please stay safe during the holiday season and let's, yeah, let's, let's pray for twenty twenty-one. Being much better than twenty twenty. We can't get out of this year fast enough, right? So anyway. So what do we have? Acceptance of minutes, right? We got the November twenty-fourth minutes. If you reviewed them, I'll go ahead and take a motion to approve.
Sure, I will make a motion to accept the town council meeting minutes from November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Second on that? Charlie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So moved. And motion to adjourn. So moved.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy holidays.
Stay safe, be well.
Take care.
Yeah.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Enjoy. Bonita.
All right. Going. Oh, there we go.
Okay, I'm going to end the meeting. Hi, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.